Good evening. I am calling the Monday, January 11th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. It is 6:30 PM. Tonight's Planning Commission Meeting will be held virtually via Zoom webinar and conference call due to the state of local emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic. Commission members and staff will participate in this meeting via telephone and video conference. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission Meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting by joining in via online Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.bernsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to https://zoom.us/join and typing in webinar ID 95687898258. Once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299 and enter meeting ID 95687898258. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when callers may speak to that item and will give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until then. Please note, there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer since there may be a delay. Now, we will move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. Do any staff members have changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes from staff.
Thank you. All right, so with that in order, may I have a motion for adoption of the agenda? Commissioner Henderson.
I move to accept the agenda.
And Commissioner John.
I second.
Moved by Henderson, seconded by John, and we will do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wad. Oh, I'm present. Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I am the motion carries. Thank you. And just to note, Commissioner Wad is going to be joining us. I think he's still having trouble getting into the meeting. I don't know that he's been able to access the meeting invitation. Okay, so the second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was back long, long ago in 2020, if you can remember that, on December 14th. And Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes from our last meeting? Staff, do you have any changes to our minutes?
No changes from staff.
Okay, thank you. And I would like a motion, and it looks like Commissioner Roberts is ready for that.
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. And Commissioner Anderson.
I second that.
Thank you. Moved by Roberts, seconded by Anderson. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I am the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is a public hearing, the application of Doug and Nancy Shalom for a conditional use permit for detached accessory structure exceeding 500 square feet and 20 feet in, excuse me, and 20 feet in height in the R1A zoning district located at 1208 Circle High Drive. And it looks like we will have Ms. Garros presenting tonight and giving us an overview of the background report. Ms. Garros, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is a public hearing. It is a conditional use permit. The application is for a detached accessory structure, a two-story garage, and they are requesting the conditional use permit because they're looking to have a larger accessory building that's larger than 500 square feet and taller than 20 feet in height. So the conditional use permit process is the way to go about accomplishing that, and the subject site is at 1208 Circle High Drive. Next slide. The property is zone R1A, which is our one-family rural residential zoning district. The lot size is 1.57 acres. For this, typically, you have seen in the past, we've had several applications, similar types of applications in the R1A zone, and probably you're thinking that the, usually that building size is 1,000 square feet. The difference here is that the lot size is less than two acres. So when it's less than two acres, even though it's out in southwest Burnsville, they are subject to the same standard for accessory buildings as they would be in the R1 zoning district. So the maximum accessory building should be 500 square feet. The applicant is proposing an accessory building of 720 square feet. It's a 24 by 30-foot two-story garage. They are looking at proposed height of 23 feet, which exceeds the maximum height standard of 20 feet by three feet. Next slide, please. On this slide, this is an excerpt of the city's zoning map, and I just wanted to provide this just so that you could see the subject site is right on the edge of the R1 zoning district. It's owned R1 directly north of the subject site, but they are indeed in the R1A, which is our one-family rural residential zone. Next slide. And on this, this is the pictometry, and what I wanted to note for Planning Commission and those of the public is that this lot is a planted lot of record, but it doesn't actually have any frontage on a public street. You can kind of see through the southeast corner on the lower right-hand side, there is a common driveway access to Circle High Drive to that southeast corner of the subject site, and then the driveway actually proceeds up to the north to where the house is at and the proposed accessory building. Next slide, please. This is the plat for Circle High Drive, just indicates in yellow, there are two locations where there are planted drainage and utility easements. The site is also comprised of north part of Lot 10 and all of Lot 9, and then there is a vacated area of Shady Oaks Drive that comprises part of the lot. The proposed building location will not interfere with any of the easements or other features on the property. Next slide. The yellow area indicates the approximate location for the proposed two-story garage. There is an existing building, an existing accessory building across the driveway that is proposed to be taken down. It's been there for a number of years and is in disrepair, and so what the applicant would like to do is to build a new two-story building. They'll have the garage on the first floor where they'll enter, and then additional storage area on the second floor. Next slide, please. This is the site plan, the black-and-white hatched building that's located kind of on the, to the southwest. That is the existing garage storage shed that will be taken down, and the new is shown in red, again, 24 by 30, 720 square feet. It's the same size as the existing building, and then the house is the building that's located further to the west. Next slide, please. We included the first floor and second floor plans, very simple. Basically, they will enter with a large overhead garage door. They've got then a pedestrian door, similar to most garages, and then stairs up to the second floor. And next slide. And then this just shows the second floor all being used for storage. Next slide. And this gives you a profile of what is proposed, and the, again, garage on first and storage second. Next slide, please. The proposed exterior materials will be vinyl lap siding, which is, will be a similar color to the existing house, and then they have metal used for the trims for the soffit and trims around the windows. There are windows located on the front, which is facing forward, and also on two sides, there are no windows or doors on the back of the building. Next slide, please. And this just gives you an idea of what the elevations will be. Next slide. The recommendation from staff is that there is sufficient area within the existing driveway that they can easily maneuver and park, you know, any vehicles to and have sufficient area to work with. The driveway that is on their lot is about 223 feet long, and then that additional driveway, that's common driveway from the edge of, or the corner of their property to the street is an additional 126 feet. So there's plenty of space within the parking, excuse me, within the driveway to park. The recommendation from staff is to recommend approval of the application as presented, subject to one condition, and that be that the applicant be required to install a hard-surface driveway between the existing driveway and the front of the new garage. With that, I can stand for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the front end before I open the public hearing? All right, I'll let you mull over your thoughts, and I will open the public hearing now at 6:43 PM. If there are any members of the public on the Zoom meeting who wish to speak, the moderator will help you out here. And if there's anyone on the telephone who wishes to speak, you can press star six to unmute yourselves. I'm just going to wait a moment to see if we have anyone who has joined us tonight. All right. Don't see that we have anybody wishing to speak tonight, so I am going to close the public hearing at 6:43, and I will open it back up to Planning Commissioners for questions, thoughts, comments, concerns. Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, staff laid this out for us pretty nicely. A great job by staff. I don't see any reason to oppose this at all. One question was, I don't know if this was brought up to any neighbors or anything. Is there any feedback from neighbors, or don't we need to worry about that?
Thank you, Commissioners. Property owners within 350 feet of the boundary of the subject site were notified. Also, there was a sign placed on the property. We have received no comments from the public regarding this application. No objections or no comments.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner John.
Yeah, I was just curious on the reasoning behind the hard-surface driveway. Is that a requirement in that district? Is that why we're requiring that as a condition?
Yes, it is a requirement in all of the zoning districts to have a hard-surface driveway, so yes.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Roberts. It's pretty open and shut. Great job on putting this together.
Ms. Garros, I have a question. The homeowner or the property owner is stating that they will remove the existing garage that's in disrepair. Is that something that we can require as a recommendation on this before we approve it?
The Planning Commission, you can add it as a condition. It would be required regardless because they would need to have actually included in the conditional use permit to allow more than one detached accessory building on site. But if the, if you feel comfortable, you can certainly add that condition.
I tend to avoid redundancies if necessary, so I think we're covered. Thank you for that explanation. All right, I don't see any other comments, so I would entertain a motion from Commissioner Roberts.
There we go. Yeah, I recommend to the city council, or that the Planning Commission recommends to the city council approval of the CUP as presented, and to allow the proposed 720-square-foot accessory building to exceed the 500-square-foot standard and exceed the 20-foot height standard to allow the proposed 23-foot tall building, subject to the following condition, which is only one, a hard-surface driveway shall be installed to access the new building from the existing driveway.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Wad. I'm glad you were able to get in.
Thank you. I will second the motion.
Thank you. Moved by Roberts, seconded by Wad, and we will have the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wad.
Hi.
Commissioner Henderson.
Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Roberts.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I am the motion carries. This will go to the city council at their next meeting, which I believe is next Tuesday, January 19th.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. And that will, well, that'll be a nice project. I actually just drove by a garage that looked very much like what you're building. So I hope you enjoy that and your property, Mr. and Mrs. Shalom. And we will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is information on the upcoming mixed-use changes. And Ms. Madden, one of our city planners, will be providing information on that for us tonight. Ms. Madden.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. This will just be a quick informational update. So there is a larger-scale project that city council has requested of staff that'll be coming up on the docket in this first quarter of 2021 that I wanted to kind of bring forward as a heads-up before we get to the public hearing stage. If you follow the city on the website or on the planning pages, you may see stuff about this before it gets to public hearing, and I just wanted to interject and give some quick summary of what is going on with these changes. So in late 2019, there was a request from council for staff to bring forward more information about Burnsville's mixed-use zoning and how it could be further implemented on a wider scale. As you may remember, from when we approved some of those rezoning changes in the 2040 Comp Plan implementation, quite a lot of new acreage of mixed use was proposed as part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and was then implemented as part of our zoning ordinance. And this would be further expansion of our mixed-use district within the city of Burnsville based on this initiative supported by a majority of the council. So I presented some information to the city council at a very early 2020 work session in January 2020. At that meeting, I was given direction as staff to move forward with some plans for Comprehensive Plan Amendment to incorporate additional mixed-use zoning across the city in some of our commercial areas that, so that we could lay the groundwork for economic development and redevelopment in the city. So 2020 had some large city projects led by developers, as well as some challenges related to outreach that we could do as a staff. And so this project has now been taking advantage of this slightly slower time period to move forward with this initiative, beginning with this quick overview, so that you can hear about what's going to be coming up soon. Next slide, please. So there are five general areas that staff will be bringing forward with a recommendation to amend the Comprehensive Plan to allow more mixed-use land use. What will come after that would be further rezoning to mixed use, and in a few cases, that we, there will be no rezonings, because as you may remember from a few weeks ago, when the TOD zoning implementation was brought to the Planning Commission, some of those properties were being rezoned in advance on the condition that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment must be approved by the Metropolitan Council. So there are a few elements at play here. But before we get to that step to bring forward these items, to illustrate to you, there are some engagement opportunities and steps that staff will go through, as well as a peer review by our adjacent jurisdictions. So staff will be in contact with all of the property owners that are affected by this change. In the early stages, we'll be contacting them to let them know that there is an initiative that affects their property, give them just informational letters, inviting them to a virtual open house so that they can ask questions of staff about what mixed use is, if you're a commercial property owner, or how might that affect your existing uses on your property, your existing tenants, if they would still be a permitted use later on, and in some cases, if a conditional use and how that might carry forward, things like that. So we will be kind of spearheading as much engagement as possible, both virtually and through traditional mailing, so that we can make sure that everyone's notified before the public hearing. We will be providing information on the city of Burnsville Planning website that provides a lot of visuals of the proposed changes, where they are, because they're in five separate locations around the city. It's not just like the Burnsville Center area, which is one large mixed-use initiative area. These are small commercial nodes throughout the city that are either, maybe they're a commercial center that could be ripe for redevelopment, or maybe they're already adjacent to mixed-use style uses, and we are kind of expanding that corner of mixed use across the street in some cases. Generally, as you saw in the background report that included the last year's report to the city council, we tried to find areas where we felt, where staff felt that mixed-use zoning would be compatible both with what the city sees in that in 10, 20, 30 years in the future, as well as what's there now. Next slide, please. So this is the original map that was brought to the city council last year. As you can see with the hashed blue zoning, that's in the expansion of the Center Village and kind of County Road 42 focus area mixed-use initiative, which is still pending and has not been finalized. But the solid blue areas are existing, either they're mixed use, or they are formerly HRC, now Transit-Oriented Development Zoning. And then the area shown in pink are areas for consideration that staff brought forward to the city council. So these are what staff has continued to look at over the last year and provided some mathematical information to the Metropolitan Council to see what acreage of our commercial zones might change, what acreage of our high-density residential zones, medium-density residential, all switching over to mixed use. Next slide, please. So again, this is very preliminary. It's an advance of the item that staff will be bringing forward in the coming weeks after an engagement period. But I did just want to keep the commission aware of what's in the pipeline. Some of the things that staff's working on, that's not, in this case, is a city council-led initiative and not a applicant-driven by a developer or resident or a business owner in the city. So we will be communicating with the property owners whose properties are involved. We've already done some outreach to the area west of 35W that was recently rezoned to Transit-Oriented Development. So we will be focusing most of this outreach on the property owners involved in areas that we're not aware of any changes based on the last Comprehensive Plan, and so this will be kind of brand-new information to learn about our mixed-use district here in the city. Property owners can request to not be a part of the request for the land use amendment. We will reevaluate our plans if that does come up. However, the current acreage math is kind of on this slide showing total, kind of rounded, but total acreage before and after the change within these highlighted pink areas. So we would be gaining 91 acres of mixed-use guided land as part of this application. So there are quite a few things that have to be presented as part of this application to the Metropolitan Council as part of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and that is also some of the information that we will be able to go over with you at the time that this item arrives for public hearing with more information and with comments and our public feedback that we have been able to get from open houses and from direct contact with the property owners involved. And so I can answer some questions and can take note of any statements that you might have, so that I can kind of, as residents of Burnsville, maybe you have some thoughts on this that I can use to help my process as I reach out to these property owners and have conversations with them. So I'm happy to hear any comments or questions, and this is just an informational item. There's no vote or action necessary.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Madden. I do know that the existing business owners will probably have a lot of questions. You definitely spoke to that, and I think it's good to try to get out ahead of this. I think mixed zoning definitely provides some advantages in these areas, but with any changes, there's going to be questions, concerns, misunderstandings too, so I appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions or guidance or thoughts regarding these areas or what's to come from Ms. Madden? Commissioner Wad.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Madden. Just trying to anticipate that what the property owner would ask is, how is this going to affect my property taxes? Will it have an effect on my property taxes? That's the question.
Exactly.
Yes, that is something that came up during the Transit-Oriented Development discussion, so we will be better prepared this time to answer those financial-based questions. I think that we are anticipating a lot of feedback on this item for this to be kind of high, high traffic on the planning area of the site for a few weeks, so.
So is there an answer that changing the zoning would affect property taxes? Or does it not, is it not that different than what they're zoned at now? Or is it very like property?
And most of these cases, the changes that they might see kind of in the five-year trajectory would be based on what investment they put into their own property still. While the mixed-use zoning can allow for higher density and a wider range of uses, the impacts of that on an individual site are still heavily influenced by the other surrounding factors in the development world. So we don't necessarily have at this time an answer prepared for our residents, but we are anticipating that that's going to be a big question.
Yeah, and so if, you know, if I owned a property in one of these consideration areas, and on either side of me, a high-rise apartment building goes up, that's going to make my property more valuable, and then my property taxes will go up because of that, but then also my property is more valuable. Is that, was that kind of one way of answering? Is that, was that kind of one way of answer, one potential scenario?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will say, so if you're very familiar with Burnsville and some of these intersections, specifically in the ones that are zoned, like a lot of that high acreage is high density residential. It would give the property owner of these apartment complexes or multifamily developments room to increase their density, but that's not necessarily what what we anticipate that the market will lead this to. There are, however, many commercial sites in this area that have property owners, which have reached out to staff in the past about ideas for the new things that they can do. And that would be another reason why some of these locations were more targeted.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner John.
Yeah, I was just curious on, are these, would, would it be fair to consider these the high priority areas for economic development for the city?
And that's a great question. So still within the city's priorities, the two key areas are still heart of the city and Center Village. So while the mixed overall expansion of mixed use, the majority of the council considered it a priority that this be something to expand mixed use further, that it be something that's done sooner rather than later. So rather than waiting for the 2050 comprehensive plan update, a large scale comprehensive plan amendment is being conducted at this stage in the, the planning process rather than in a few more years. So it's a priority in that the majority of count, the council was prepared to start the project, but it's not kind of in that official legislative priority and like key focused areas that are heart of the city and Center Village for economic development.
That makes sense. Thank you. So Ms. Madden, just to kind of condense what you or how you responded to Commissioner Wad, basically, the, the zoning change itself does not trigger any property tax change. It's the, the outside market influences that could occur as a result of the zoning change that could potentially change somebody's property taxes. Is that safe to say?
Yes, that is a great summary of that.
All right. I do not see any other comments or questions, so I will thank you, Ms. Madden. I am looking forward to digging in a little deeper on this with you and learning more as the year progresses. So at this point, we'll move on to updates. Are there any updates from planning commissioners or staff at this point?
So I just have a quick question or update. As you may remember from the December 14th meeting, when Ms. Dean was here, our assistant community development director, to talk about the 2021 work plan and how that would mainly a lot of time be dedicated to the titles 10 and 11 updates in the city code. And one of the things that was discussed at that discussion item was just an inquiry of if there were any concepts or ideas that the planning commission had related to city code updates that they would want to be a further discussed as we move through the code throughout the year. So we had kind of said that maybe in a month, if we have anything, we'll bring it up at the next meeting. So if you do have anything that you'd like me to note down or would like to email staff later, please continue to feel free to, to interject.
Commissioner Wad.
I don't recall if we talked about this. In the city code, single family homes are prohibited from having metal roofs. Did that, did that change? Or is that still kind of on the list of things to address?
It was, yes, that's a good question. That was changed. It is, was changed, I believe, in May, June, sometime late spring, early summer, there was an amendment that incorporated that as well as some other changes.
Okay, thank you. Just to buy a little bit of time, our meeting minutes indicated we have until the 14th to provide feedback, or that was the preferred date. And it's funny because I was actually going to bring this up too as kind of reminder. But if, if any commissioners do have an opportunity to send thoughts or ideas to the way of Ms. Madden, that would be great. I, I know we kind of brainstormed a few things at our last meeting as far as you know, rollout timelines and, you know, issues or not issues ordinances that may have fiscal impacts, things like that. So we've kind of started and I'm sure as we go through our meetings over the next several weeks, we'll we'll think of other things as well. But is it okay, Ms. Madden, if we have until the end of the week, maybe to send you any ideas?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So that is our agenda for this evening, unless there are other updates.
Chairman, I would just like to give you a couple of things that have been going on. Actually, we've been very busy and you will be seeing a couple of things. Tomorrow night for the council's work session, there are some sites that will be discussed, one in the Minnesota River Quadrant for a potential large development on some of the vacant property down there. They'll be talking about seeing if they can get some grant funding, tax increment, financing, that type of thing. There is also a sketch plan for the River View Center, which is where Mr. B's is at for a concept plan for an apartment, I believe, and maybe some commercial involved in that. And then in addition to that, they are talking about environmental assessment like EAWs and EISs. These are the formal things that for the most part, planning commission doesn't get involved directly, but it may be of interest to you just to see kind of what goes on with those. Generally, what happens is if something requires an environmental review and that's identified in state statute and state rules, then there is a formal process that involves the environmental quality board and then various agencies that do this formal review. So they're going to have kind of a, an education item on the work session with the council tomorrow night, talking about those. And one of the things they're going to be talking about are called these AUARs, which are alternative urban area reviews. It's an environmental review. And we are proceeding. We have a consultant that is helping us with the Center Village AUAAR. And so we're proceeding with that, just getting underway. And it's likely that planning commission will be involved, you know, in, in this one because it involves so many different components from, you know, the traffic studies, street highway improvements to, you know, redevelopment potential, that type of thing. So just wanted to let you know that. Also, we're anticipating the building permit for the Northland project. That is the senior apartment building by the Grace United Methodist Church. That permit should be issued this week. And they are closing on the property. So you'll start, start seeing construction there relatively soon. We also are working on a couple of other apartment proposals, you know, being considered. So lots going on and you will be seeing all sorts of things coming your way in the not too distant future. So just wanted to give you a heads up. That's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sounds like tomorrow night's work session will be of interest to some of us. Thank you for the heads up on that. I do know that we lost Commissioner Henderson. So Mr. Anderson, you're going to have to help us get out of this meeting. But before we do, I just want to remind members of the public that you can submit additional public comment related to the items on this evening's planning commission agenda until 4:30 PM on Friday, January 15th, 2021. And these comments will then be included with the city council background for their next meeting. At this time, I would like to request a motion for adjournment to our January 11th, 2021 final commission. Commissioner Anderson.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Roberts.
Second.
Move Anderson seconded by Roberts, and we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Awad.
Nice job, Nick. Hi.
Commissioner John.
Hi.
Commissioner Robert.
Hi.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Hi. And the motion carries. Thank you all. Have a great evening.